Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the school committee meeting of May 9th, 2016. The first thing I would like to do tonight is welcome Mr. Mark Yule. Mark is our student representative tonight. On behalf of the committee, Mark, welcome. If you have any questions this evening, please feel free to interrupt and ask. Thanks for being here with us. First on tonight's agenda is the acceptance of the meetings of our meeting of April 25th, 2016.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
A stand.
Thank you. That's a vote. Next on tonight's agenda, our correspondence, Mr. Retchless.
We have a flyer from the Rockland Youth Soccer. They're accepting registrations for Fall 2016. That's on May 21st, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Esten School. I'm recommending distribution kindergarten through 8th grade.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Superintendent's report, Mr. Retchless.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the taxpayers of Rockland for their support of our budget and also of our article items at town meeting. It means a lot. We do a lot of really, really good things with the money that you entrust in our care. Secondly, and finally this evening, like to let you know that our high school environmental club has been awarded a national award by the National Energy Education Development Project. They are the Massachusetts Senior Rookie of the Year, and they just give out one main award per state and then a rookie award. And four of our students and Ms. Armstrong, the advisor, have been invited to Washington, DC to accept this award in June. So we're very proud of them.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Retchless. Next on tonight's agenda is monthly reports. We have four reports, one from administrators and Dr. Cron, one from guidance and Mrs. Shaw, one from the school nurse, Mrs. Ryan, and one from pupil personnel services from Mrs. Miniglia. I'll entertain four motions.
Four motions.
Second.
All those in favor? Alright, that's a vote. Next on the agenda for your information is school newsletters from our schools, our four schools. Always informative and great to read to see what our kids and our teachers and schools are up to.
And colorful.
And colorful. Yes, in full color. Thank you very much. Next on tonight's agenda is building rentals for the month of April. Our buildings are busy as usual and being filled with all kinds of activities. We have wonderful buildings, and we're happy to be able to fill them with all kinds of great activities, and that clearly is being done. And next on tonight's agenda is curriculum corner. Mr. Retchless?
Well, somewhere in that sea of five-year-olds is Mrs. Scheifly. Would you like to come up?
Can I have my kindergarten teachers join us? So we have five teachers with us tonight who are all implementing the Focus on K-2 curriculum, which I'll explain in just a moment. Mrs. Jocelyn, Ms. McLean, Mrs. Jenkins, Mrs. Creedon, and Mrs. Frey. And Ms. Marchionne is back there running the technology right now. They are really the stars of this curriculum along with the students. For two years now, we have been implementing this program. Five of our teachers were trained with it last year, and four of the rest of our team, four of them have been trained this year. It's a really hands-on curriculum, and I first wanted to have Mrs. Janice Frey talk a little bit about it from the teacher perspective.
Thanks for having us. I think I'll start by going backwards in time a little bit to a time when many of us were getting our teaching certifications and were in graduate school and getting our master's degrees in early childhood education. And one of the principles that we encountered over and over and over again was developmentally appropriate practice. And basically, this is the idea that we can't teach children things that their brains aren't ready to learn. And we embraced this concept, and we read about all the research behind it, and we saw it in action in our student teaching. And then some years ago, this trend came sweeping through education, this trend of academic push-down. Educators were being asked to teach skills to children earlier and earlier, and throughout the country, you could hear kindergarten teachers weeping because the kids, some of them, we thought, weren't ready to learn these skills. But we adjusted our practice and tried to teach the skills to the kids, and believe it or not, a lot of them met our challenge. But there was a cost to this, and the cost was social skills. There just wasn't enough time in the day to have rigorous academics and to teach social skills. But we stopped crying because Focus on K-2, this new curriculum, came our way, and it's really met all of our needs, both academic and social needs. So like Mrs. Scheifly said, Boston is in their fourth year of implementation of this curriculum. It was created by their Early Childhood Division, and they have been thrilled with the results. And then the Department of Ed has also jumped on board, and they are really supportive of the curriculum. And the reason being is that it's the perfect blend of literacy instruction and social skills instruction, and it's 100% developmentally appropriate. So if you were to walk through our kindergarten classrooms, you would definitely see a block of time with explicit literacy instruction, teaching those ABCs, teaching those sight words. And then you'd see a separate portion of our day that's carved out for these K-2 centers. That's what they call the curriculum, Focus on K-2. So some of the centers that you would see would be dramatic play, drawing and writing, building center, word work, science. Every center is grounded in the unit that we're studying, and there's four units taught throughout the year. And if you would visit a center and sit down with the children that were there, you'd see the kids immersed in an exchange of really rich oral language. You'd see kids with books in their hands, researching, retelling, reading. The activities in every center are engaging and deep and thought-provoking, and they also happen to meet many of the Common Core ELA objectives in a really developmentally appropriate way. So now, in addition to the rich academic skills that the children are acquiring, they're also developing these really important 21st century skills. So all throughout these K-2 centers, which are about 60 to 80 minutes in length, they are communicating, taking turns, collaborating, negotiating, for real, problem-solving, learning how to handle frustration, all those things that you want your learners to be. So I am the mom of a first grader, he's sitting over there, and in the town where we live, we don't have a curriculum like this, and it makes me very sad. So I feel like the students of Rockland are really, really lucky to have it.
Thank you, Mrs. Frey. And just, Mrs. Frey's covered a lot of this. It's a really hands-on, immersive curriculum. And based on, when I'm walking through classrooms, I see oral and written language skills, background knowledge, deep vocabulary being built. Great for our ELL students, they're utilizing the vocabulary. You'll see some of that hands-on today. Student choice is a big thing, and there are four units, habitats, community, construction, and our earth. And the biggest thing is it's science, technology, engineering, and math are weaved throughout the curriculum as well. And you'll see kids, if you walk into the classrooms, dissecting owl pellets. Some of our students will talk to you about that today. Tracing outlines of animals with blocks and taking measurements, creating different habitats, this happens to be the woodlands, and creating habitats for their animals based on all the rich literature that they're reading. And here are some students in action in several centers in Mrs. Marchionne's room. So you can see the block center, and then we have the drawing center. And you can see our iPads in use, the iPads that were donated by the RAF. For this particular part, they're looking for nature to copy. And then we have a science center sorting seeds and using all the tools that scientists And so that was, you can hear the oral language going on, you can hear the vocabulary, and you can hear the activity. That's alright. Oh, did it pop out? That's okay. While we're working on that, you'll see that students also are able to, they are storytellers. They are working in small groups in dramatic play, art centers, word work, iPads. And the great thing about the new iPads that were delivered to our kindergartners by the RAF, the word work is very more enticing to the student. A lot of times, the iPads are used for word work as well as one of those centers. So instead of writing on chalk boards or marker boards, they're able to actually work with engaging games as well. I think we'll just have our students come on up. Can I have all my kindergartner's friends come on? You guys want to stand right here?
So our students are here today to share some of their projects that they've been working on in the classroom, and I'd like them to, can you say your names? Go ahead.
Neil, Joe, Nicholas, Anna, Sydney, Eva, Isabelle.
And one of the big parts of Focus on K-2 that I have loved is the thinking and feedback. It mimics what we do in writing workshops, where students are giving feedback to each other and ways to make improvements on whatever they have created during that session. They, different students take turns showing their creations, and I think I pass out to you thinking and feedback steps. The very first one is, who can tell me what the first one is? Anyone else? What's the first step?
Watching.
Watching or looking, right? What's the next step?
Noticing.
Noticing. What's the third step?
Listening.
Listening. What's the fourth step?
Wondering.
Wondering. What's the next step?
Feedbacking.
Yeah, thinking and feedback, right? And they know thinking and feedback. And as you can see, what I passed out to you had some question stems. So we have matched each of our wonderful kindergartners with one of you to show their pictures of their product or their product. And if you could use some of those question stems to ask a little bit about what they're sharing with you. Do you want to walk onto the interview? Go ahead.
Hi. How are you? Good to see you again.
What are you gonna show me?
Just tell me all about what you got.
What's going on? Should we go over there now? What's that? You gonna show me your stuff? So what is it we got here? Okay. No, okay. Did you show I know that? Come on, I'm gonna come right around here and I'll come over to you, okay? Come show me, alright? Did you cut these off? Why did you do it? I was wondering, huh?
So why don't you tell me all about this?
Okay. Which one is, which one did you, which one is, you did, can you tell me about? What is that telling us? What is that? What is it? Now that's that, right? Oh, okay. Okay, do you ever rock wallets, cool? Oh, yeah, nice.
This thing is beautiful. You must have had fun making it too, huh? That's really cool. Really cool. Awesome. Now, what's your favorite part of kindergarten? Playing with your friends, I bet, I bet, but you get to learn a lot too, huh? Now, who's your teacher? Oh, she's so nice. She's really nice. I really like that cornball. It's really beautiful. It's so colorful. You guys did a really great job. That's awesome. Can I get a high five again? Great job. Great job. I'm sure your parents are really proud of you and really excited to see you come up here tonight.
Wow. How long does it take you? Couple of days, week? Yeah? Yeah? You having fun in school? Huh? Do you like it? Do you like your teacher? You do? Go ahead. I used to like all my teachers too. Are you smart? Huh? Good for you. Good for you. Is your mommy and daddy proud of you?
Really great.
Yeah.
Great job. All these people up here.
You look so nice tonight.
We all do this just for you kids. We get so excited about seeing you guys learn and seeing you do great in school, so keep up the good work, okay? Alright, thank you. Straight, another high five. Alright, good job.
That is absolutely fantastic. Great job. I am very impressed. Is it over there? Is your Lego thing over there?
Oh, no, we had to break it.
Oh, you did? Alright, 'cause I want to come over and see it, but you did an awesome job. You play any sports? Good man. Keep it up. Great job.
If you had a pellet for my little owl, it would be like, it would be too small. Did you enjoy this? Did you find it interesting?
Yes. I found like one of these in that like holds right out.
Wow.
And it was so loud.
Wow. Wow, did all your friends find it interesting too?
Yes, for Dell. I think that's her maybe, but I'm not. And so she.
So I just found a skull. And it was, I didn't know what it was at first. I thought it was a big ball of herb, but it wasn't.
Mm-hmm. That's really, you know something? I used to be a teacher, and I used to have my class do owl pellets, but you know what grade that was? Fifth grade. And now you're doing it in kindergarten. That's really, really impressive. Well, these are the tools, okay.
This is a microphone glass. And your pencils are tweezers.
Very good.
This is the things we need to do to convince. Sometimes I get all the screen versus client, then I put this down.
So you can see it. I think you're supposed to go back over there. Thank you so much.
And see if anyone has any questions. Do you have any questions for the teachers or the students?
Well, just a couple comments. First of all, I think this is our favorite part of school committee. I think this is why we do this. You know, we love to see, especially this age group. I mean, first of all, you guys are all well-dressed and you look awesome. Great job. My other comment would be having, coming right off of Teachers Appreciation Week, I want to thank all of you. My son Gavin was a kindergartner last year, and the kind of kid that he was the day one and the kind of kid that he was at the last day of school was really remarkable. Really set him up for first grade, and he's really having a successful first grade, and I think a lot of it was due to the full-day kindergarten and having you all take great care of these kids. We're really proud of, I know Mrs. Frey's had mentioned having this available here in Rockland, and we're really proud of it, and I think that the benefits of it, we're already seeing it. So, great job, kids. Thank you.
Now you get me going here. I would also like to thank you all. One of the things I noticed, that when I was discussing with my, sorry, your name?
Camille.
Camille, is that she was very articulate, and she was very informative when she was speaking to me. I asked several questions, and she came right back with the answers, and they were very good. So Camille, you did a super job, and I bet you all did a super job, and I bet you had a lot of fun doing this, right? Yeah, alright. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great job, guys. Thank you. Great job, kids. Well done.
Seeing nothing under old business, next item under the agenda tonight would be the superintendent's entry plan, and I know we have Dr. Alan Cron here with us to talk a little bit about that.
I was gonna suggest, Dan, if I might, that they don't have to stay if they don't want to.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Yeah, ladies and gentlemen, I know a lot of these kids and even some of the adults might have early bedtimes tonight, so don't feel free that you have to stick around.
Not you, Dr. Cron.
Me?
You are well-dressed though. You are well-dressed.
That was the cutest thing ever.
Yes, it's gonna reflect. You're not supposed to wear white shirts on television. Or vertical stripes.
Can't tell you how often this happens. I come into a room.
That everyone leaves?
Yeah.
You got no one watching you now.
What's that?
Except for us.
I know.
Mark's trying to leave too. He just got done with a baseball game, and he's going over and have dinner.
What a cutie.
Man, they have some great kids. They were so articulate.
Oh, great kids.
Spectacular. Oh, you have an audience now.
Excellent. Okay.
Miss Paulie and Miss Bond probably figured they have no choice.
So, I'm gonna apologize in advance. I'm violating every PowerPoint rule known to man with this presentation, but I'm thinking of this as more for the public and also for all of you, but this is a, it's a plan, so it is going to change, and I do want feedback and input from the school committee and from the public. So this presentation will be posted on my website, on the school website. I'm happy to email it, but it's very wordy and thick, but again, because this is recorded in a document, people can go back to it and refer to it. And obviously, this is a very important process, so as much as I like to do things in as few words as possible, sometimes you can use too few words also, so I apologize in advance for the thick slides. The purpose of this presentation, of this plan, is to share with you some of my hopes and plans for the first six months of my tenure as superintendent, which will begin on July 1st. Pause, slide. There we go. So I will be, this will lay out pretty much all, each activity that I intend to follow through with beginning July 1st. So individual meetings with the school committee, review my entry plan with each of them, meet with the leadership team, individual meetings with all of the building principals and administrators, individual meetings with other district-level administrators, everyone in central office, and small group meetings with each of the collective bargaining association groups. Internal stakeholders, site visits to schools, faculty meetings, focus groups, focus group sessions with Rockland High School and Rogers Middle School students, attend meetings of each of the site councils, school function and activities, and try to get some parent volunteers together to host parent coffees in each of the buildings so that I can get to know them sort of on their own turf. And external stakeholders, individual meetings with our town manager and accountant, chief of police, fire chief, and town department heads. I've done many of these meetings when I came in as principal, but I think it's important to repeat this process and be able to ask questions today and now, and it's a very different role that I'm playing, so getting to learn their views of how I will interact with them and how the schools interact with them is very important. I also plan to reach out to media and our legislators in the area. So the question, these questions, and I'd say the first question is probably the most important to me, is I go around and meet with each one of these individuals, is for them to tell me what they do. You know, what do you do? What's your job? Explain to me how you are invested and how you interact with the school system, what role do you play, whether you're a school committee member or a kindergarten teacher or, you know, Ed Loughlin, our head custodian. It's important for me to hear in their own words what they do, and I intend to pay very close attention to that. And then the rest of the questions are fairly typical entry plan questions, and again, they're designed for me to collect as much information as I can from people. But again, of all of these questions, I'd say the first and the last to me are, if I had to cut all of them, I'd want to ask the first and the last, you know, what do you do and what do you expect from me as superintendent? And I expect to be surprised, you know, I really do want to hear what's on people's minds. Later, I'll talk about taking all this information and putting it together and creating a report. I want people to know that their individual comments will remain confidential, that it's, I want as honest feedback as I can receive from folks, so I want people to know that their comments or concerns will be kept between the two of us, and when I go to make a report, it will be in general statements. I will also be analyzing a lot of data and documents, all of our school improvement plans, budget documents, collective bargaining agreements, curriculum guides, annual town reports, and accommodation plans for special education. I'm skipping a lot, but again, it's, these are fairly standard pieces of data that I need to study in depth to have as thorough a sense of the district as possible. So Phase 2 begins in October, and this is a very important part of the entry plan because here's where I take all of this information and I sit down with constituents, people who actually are implementing our programs, whether it's food service or classroom teachers or curriculum. And I look at this data and I say, this is what it's saying to me, what does it say to you? And I'm almost certain that it's gonna be saying something different to many of them than it's saying to me, and I want to listen to what they have to say. So I'm very excited about this particular part of the plan. Then I draft the findings, and I share them, then I create a final report. Dave, could you go back just one, please? Thank you. So the draft report is then shared and again, sort of vetted with key stakeholders. The school committee will receive a copy of the draft report, the principals will receive a copy of the draft report, again, giving you an opportunity to say, you missed this, or can you explain this to me? We're gonna be trading information back and forth just to make sure that I'm hearing what I think I'm hearing and I'm not missing anything. Thank you, Dave. And then the final report will be shared, you know, disseminated throughout the school community. And again, sharing the report, I'm hoping that I will get feedback, more and more feedback. And also, this process will hopefully tell all of our stakeholders how I intend to do business, that I want to be transparent, I want to be approachable. When I ask a question, I really mean it, so I'm looking forward to this particular phase. And then Phase 3, this is where we truly dig into what we've been talking about, strategic planning. So here's where we'll develop specific student learning improvement goals, and the strategic planning committee will gather, and this will be again, with stakeholders from the school committee, including students, including teachers, community members. And again, at the end, what do we do now that we think we understand what our challenges are and what our goals are? And then the goal is to take all of this information and put it into a plan that has goals that we intend to achieve, and if we don't achieve those goals, I expect to be asked why. Why didn't we achieve those goals? So I'll be asking them, and I hope I'm asked the same questions. So this should be a, you know, a give-and-take, a back-and-forth process. The final product, when we come up with a strategic plan and our objectives, when someone comes in with a phenomenal idea, we hold that idea up to this plan and say, where does this, how does this idea support this plan that we so thoroughly developed together? And it gives us a way to say, yeah, that's a great idea, but maybe we need to table it for year three of our plan, or so on and so forth. It gives us a real clear target, we know what we're aiming for. And keeping this alignment... So, I'm looking forward to, to this particular phase. And then Phase Three, this is where we truly dig into the, what we've been talking about, strategic planning. So, here's where we'll develop specific student learning improvement goals and the strategic planning committee will, will gather and this will be again, with stakeholders from the school committee, including students, including teachers, community members. And, and again, at the end, what do we do now that we think we understand what our challenges are and what our goals are? And then the goal is to take all of this information and put it into a, a plan that has goals that we intend to achieve and if we don't achieve those goals, I expect to be asked, why? Why didn't we achieve those goals? So, I'll be asking them and I hope I'm asked the same questions. So, this should be a, you know, a give and take, a back and forth process. The final, the final product, when we come up with a strategic plan and our objectives, when we, when someone comes in with a phenomenal idea, we hold that idea up to this plan and say, where does this, how does this idea support this plan that we so, you know, thoroughly developed together? And it gives us a way to say, yeah, that's a great idea, but maybe we need to table it for year three of our plan, or so on and so forth. It gives us a real clear target, we know what we're aiming for. And keeping this alignment, I know for me personally, I'm, I function much better when I know what I'm trying to achieve. And it sounds self-evident, but having two or three very big goals is very helpful to me and I think it's helpful to my colleagues when I talk to teachers and, and even students. Why are we doing this? What are the, what are the three big things we are trying to accomplish as a district? And it gives you, it gives you a much better sense of, of purpose and where you're going and I think a much greater chance to actually achieve those goals. So, if you would like a copy of this PowerPoint, you can email me or you can visit my webpage, it'll also be on our website. I went through it very quickly, but again, it is a, I'm hoping that I get an email or two from school committee member, from a student, from a parent, saying, what do you mean? What does this mean? Or, how come you're not gonna talk to this group? My biggest fear is leaving someone out because all of our groups are important and they all, in one way or another, support our students.
Thank you, Dr. Cron.
Sure.
I think for anybody who's had the opportunity to work with Dr. Cron in his role as principal of the high school, knows him as a fine leader and collaborator and I'm really excited for the town of Rockland to have the opportunity to meet you and hear about your ideas for the future of Rockland Public Schools. This certainly is comprehensive and exciting and I know I for one am really excited about the future with Dr. Alan Cron as superintendent of Rockland Schools.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'm very excited.
Go ahead, you want something?
It's, it's just a, it's, it's a lot of words, but every single one of those steps are things that I'm gonna do or you're gonna do or we're gonna do together and that's really what's gonna produce, you know, forward motion, so, anyway.
I think you're wise to go back and see all of these groups again because in almost every instance, the players have changed. You may not have met many of the players, other than just casually perhaps, so I think it, I think you're wise to go back and as now the superintendent of schools to, to visit with them and get their thoughts and needs and opinions and all that type of thing. Good for you.
Dr. Cron, the only thing that I, I see on here that maybe we can take a look at is, is there a possibility we could move that July 1st timeline to a June 1st timeline? So that we could have this full report before the end of the school year and before we kinda go into that summer recess in case any kind of changes need to be made?
A lot of what's in that plan is being done now.
Okay.
I, I think I, I've laid it out that way, sort of out of respect for the, the process and, and I don't officially begin.
No, no, I'm talking about July 1st of next year. Instead, can we move that?
Oh, absolutely.
That final timeframe, that final report and that planning, June 1st, that we have a full report.
Oh, absolutely.
Just before the school year ends?
Yep.
In case we wanna make, implement any changes before the school year ends, that people go into the summer and knows what's happening the following year.
Yep.
It would also help regarding your evaluation too, Doc, that, that having seen just, you know, where you've been, what you've come up with that.
Yep.
That, that was one of the questions I had is, you know, a couple minutes, we're gonna talk about the procedure for Mr. Retschlis's evaluation. And then normally, you know, it would fall into the, what would be his objectives for next year, which now become your objectives and how we're gonna fold that into, you know, that evaluation process, you know? You know, John might have a whole bunch, you might have a whole bunch of different objectives than John would, would be, basically, okay? The only other thing, this is not an all-inclusive list, I take it?
Right.
Okay, because, you know, one of the things that really stood out to me was the school site councils, you know, I don't, you know, the interaction with them.
Though, they're, it's in there.
Is there? Where? I didn't see that.
But again, there's so many words and so many groups, if there's a group that's left off, I, I.
Some meetings of school councils.
Right.
Okay, yeah, okay.
And the PTOs and.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Sure.
That's, that's the only thing, my, you know, is the evaluation process that's coming up, yeah.
I had no idea in October, when, when I was awarded the position for July 1st, I had no idea what, how it was gonna feel the rest of the school year, sort of being, and that very first slide and the very first sentence, it says, you know, my tenure as Rockland High School principal is gonna come to an end. One of the things that kinda gets lost in this is, that's very challenging for me, I've been, I have very mixed feelings about that. So, trying to put a clear end, ending date and starting date, it's very, it's very fluid. Mr. Retschlis and I have been working together daily. At the same time, there are many, many things going on in the high school that demand attention, so it's been quite a balancing act. I expected an entry plan to start before July 1st as well because it's already really going on. So, we can talk about some of the specifics more if you, if you have things that you'd like to see me doing or questions you'd like answered.
Okay.
It's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Retschlis.
Alright, thank you.
Next on tonight's agenda is the first reading of the Rogers Middle School handbook. In the interest of time, Mr. Retschlis has asked us to waive the second reading and have a vote on it tonight. Are there any comments or questions from the committee?
Just the, the title page, the hierarchy has changed a little bit. I think you are chairman now, sir.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Bond is here to.
That maybe, that page should be.
Take your slings and arrows.
There's another page with the dates of who's responsible for what, so Mr. Retschlis's name has changed.
Oh, okay, great.
That's all done, I just didn't put that.
Okay, thanks, Beth.
So we're actually gonna make a motion to waive the first reading?
Alright, motion to waive.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
With the changes?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on tonight's agenda, foundations and a request for textbook approval. Mr. Retschlis?
I put textbook approval because that's normally what you do, but it's really program approval. I've invited Mrs. Jan Sheehan, Mrs. Jan Sheehan, who is our curriculum coordinator, and Ms. Karen McKinnon, who's our literacy coach, to talk about this. I'm very, very excited about this. This is a comprehensive approach to reading that is, that has every constituent, every stakeholder excited. The administrators are excited and on the same page, the teachers are excited and on the same page. And I will ask Karen and Jan to talk about how we got here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Retschlis. If you haven't met Karen McKinnon before, or people in the audience haven't met her before, Karen McKinnon is our elementary literacy coach and a wonderful resource to all of the administrators as well as all of the teachers in all of our schools. Last summer, the administrators all met together with Linda McNigley and we talked about our reading and writing workshop model and how we can strengthen that program that we already have in place. And we were moving towards our MTSS model, that multi-tiered system of support, and we were awarded state funding to attend professional development, so all three schools qualified for it, which was wonderful. Because at first, when we looked at it, we thought only one school might qualify, they would only let one of us in, they allowed all three of us to join, which was fantastic. So together, as a team, we have been attending professional development, learning together, growing together, and we really knew that we had to strengthen our reading and writing workshop in the area of phonics. Because every assessment that we give to students, we see that those foundational skills are still weak and when the kindergarten teachers were talking about the Focus K2 in that oral language development, we're seeing that as a huge weakness as students are entering our classrooms because they're not having those experiences where they're sharing language and learning just basic words. So now, almost basic words are becoming vocabulary words, which is interesting. So, a lot of kids are on technology instead of having rich conversations and discussions, so we're trying to build all of those things in. So, foundations was researched by Mrs. McKinnon and a representative from each of the buildings. So we sent a teacher from each of the buildings with Mrs. McKinnon to go view the program in action in other districts. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. McKinnon so she can share her wonderful work.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here tonight. So, as Mrs. Sheehan was saying, we have definitely recognized the foundational, foundational skills as being a weakness in the elementary schools. Our data has really shown that over the last four or five years that, that I have been here. So what I did was, with this group of teacher leaders, I established some site visits and we went down to Sandwich and we observed the Founda-Simpanal Phonics Program. Then we went to Hall and we observed the Foundations Program and there was a third program that we were looking at, it's called ECRI, Enhanced Core Reading Instruction. And so we went ahead and spoke with some people from a, a group that specializes in that. And then we had a meeting together with the four of us and really weighing the pros and cons and it, it became pretty evident, pretty clearly, that, that the foundations was gonna be the, the best way for us to go. Not only does it incorporate phonics, it incorporates phonemic awareness, there's vocabulary, and then also the handwriting piece is, is wrapped into this foundations program as well. So in a thirty-minute chunk of, of instructional time, the teachers are gonna be able to, to really directly instruct the students in all the areas of the foundational skills that are necessary for, for kids to be successful. So we're definitely very excited about it. One of the other things that the foundations program has is a tier-two intervention piece and as Mrs. Sheehan had mentioned, talking about the MTSS and the multi-tier approach, this allows the teachers to have their thirty-minute block of, of direct instruction for tier one, and then there's also a component for tier two, which will allow us to use special education teachers, Title I support, and even some paraprofessionals to do some small group instruction for students and really target them in areas that, that still are perhaps a little bit, a little bit weak, so it covers both of those, those pieces. In addition, there's a wonderful online component for the teachers' use that has videos, tons of additional resources, progress monitoring tools, that the teachers will all have access to, through the purchasing of, of the materials. So, we're really looking forward to it. I think it's gonna bring all the teachers from all three of the buildings together and onboard, teaching the same thing to the students, which is gonna be very helpful for them as they move from, from grade to grade as well. One of the things that we are asking is for a rollout over three years, so we're hoping to roll out for K to two this next school year, 2016-17, and then we'll add grade three the following year, 2017-18, and then if need be, we would look at purchasing some intervention kits for grade four. It is a K to three program.
Exciting stuff. Questions from the committee, comments?
Well, I appreciated the, the video and everything that I watched before coming tonight. That was helpful.
The only thing I was looking at is the handwriting. I mean, no, people don't spend much time writing things.
No, and handwriting is really important for building the foundational skills and the, spending the time on it and incorporating it in a multi-sensory approach is, is really important, so that's gonna help, that, help the kids a lot with that as well.
Yeah, I think it will.
Yeah.
That's a key one. Yeah, thank you.
We're gonna fund this program with the money we got at a special town meeting, following the principle that one-time money should be used for, for one-time expenses.
Great.
As we did last year.
Excellent. Great. Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. McKinnon. Thank you, Ms. Jan. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda, superintendent's evaluation timetable. Mr. Retschlis, any comments about this?
It's essentially the, the same as last year. I will be getting to you the Word versions of the template. I will have in your hands my self-assessment, which follows the various elements of the rubric by June 6th with the request that individual members of the school committee return their individual evaluations to Mr. Biggins by June 17th, with the evaluation happening in open meeting on the last meeting, school committee meeting of the year.
Very good. Comments, questions?
Motion to approve. Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's a vote. Public service announcements. Tom?
I don't have any right now, thank you.
Very good.
Concert Friday night, great show the other night, superintendent and I sat there. These kids are magnificent, they truly are. I don't care whether it's a baseball game or a play or a concert, they all excel in their own way. These are all glues that hold everything together and if anyone gets a chance to, gee, get out and see something, really, it's so worthwhile.
The only thing I have, a couple things. Sports have been going crazy, it's really hard to keep track of, of anything that's going on. The baseball team, the boys won today against North Quincy, seven to two. I saw lacrosse was playing when I left. It's really hard to figure out where they are with this weather and all this other kind of confusion. There will be a meeting of the Rockland Fields Project. As you know, at town meeting, we approved $3.9 million debt exclusion to build a new athletic complex and to revitalize the fields over at Bicentennial Park. So there'll be a meeting, a public meeting at seven o'clock on Wednesday night at the Harmon Club. Come, bring your questions, listen, ask questions. And then there will be an election with the Roads Project and this Fields Project on, for June 11th. So Saturday, June 11th will be a special election for those two ballot questions. So, regardless of how you feel about both of them, we just ask you to come out, have your voice heard, and do your civic duty and get out and vote. That's it.
Thank you. And I would just like to reiterate Mr. Phelps's comments about the production of a chorus line, it was absolutely fantastic. I mean, you know, you, you think of going to a school production and this was nothing like that. This was like a professional musical production. The orchestra was fantastic, our own Dr. Alan Cron was a member of that. But not only that, the facilities, it was really great to be in our auditorium and hear such a, such a great production, the sound quality, the acoustics in that room, it's really a great place to see a show, but more importantly, the kids are fantastic. Also, you know, we like to talk a lot about, not only in the schools but in Rockland, what a great culture we have in this town, what a great town Rockland is, how great it is to be a bulldog. I mentioned it a little bit earlier tonight about Teacher Appreciation Week being last week. The culture in our town is very much, I think, due in a large part to our schools and in a large part to our teachers. We're very, very lucky in this town to have fantastic teachers and I would just like to thank every single one of them for all they do every single day. And without, with that.
I have one more thing, I forgot.
Please, go ahead.
Sorry. Reminder to the kids, junior prom is a week from Thursday. Make sure you do the right thing. We do not wanna have any issues with kids not being able to walk in graduation. These final few weeks are coming into us and it's happened far, far too many times in the past, so just wanna make sure these kids are doing the right thing. Go out, have fun, but be smart. That's it.
Thank you very much.